Thanks, Jason. Good evening. I would like to call the May meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees to order. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call and recognition of visitors. Ms. Schlist?
This evening's visitors include Dick Carter, Roberta Evans Laje, Allison Ginster, Dennis Batliner, Cheryl Batliner, Blake Koger, Susan McAfee, Matt McCabe, and Nick Cole.
Thank you. Awards and recognitions, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Trustee Cook. I'd like to start off by calling Professor of Science Laurie Slaven to the podium. Laurie?
I have Brenda Edmonds with me also. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. We are here to talk about our second annual Science and Math Poster Symposium, which was held on April 27th. We had over 150 posters that were presented, and over 170 of our students were involved in this event. The goals of our symposium include the following: to provide students with an opportunity to showcase their work in terms of research or a project in a conference-type setting; building confidence in communicating scientific and mathematical information; providing students with feedback from judges who are experts in their fields. And our judges were made up of our faculty, our staff, our board of trustee members, administrators, and we had over 50 of you involved in supporting our event and our students. It also provided an opportunity for science and math students and faculty to collaborate and to provide an opportunity to stimulate interest in the science and math fields. And we want to recognize one of our students and their faculty mentor. This is Professor Nancy Holcroft Benson, and this is one of our students, Melvin Santosa. He's also an honor student here at the college. He's also in my Gen Chem, had him all year for Gen Chem I and Gen Chem II. So he's one of my students, too.
Wow.
And I'm going to turn this over to Melvin for a moment.
Thank you for the opportunity to have me present in the JCC Math and Science Symposium and also with the honors program. So basically, I build models of species that we don't normally see in the United States and/or are endangered in the wild.
Wow.
So once again, I would like to thank the college for providing me with the resources for this project.
Wow. That's excellent.
For supporting the event, the foundation graciously gave Brenda. Brenda conveniently has laryngitis. But we did receive a grant from the foundation to support the symposium, so thank you.
And hold on, Laurie. Brenda, if you haven't had a chance to attend a poster session, it's really one of the coolest things that you can see here. But it says here you had 50 judges made up of faculty, staff, administrators. You had 17 faculty mentors. It's really kind of a huge event to pull together, so thank you so much for doing it. Those are real challenges, but certainly the students loved it. And in fact, there's even a note here that Emily Norton's parents came here all the way from North Carolina because they were so proud to see her work. So thanks for making that possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more recognition I'd like to share with the board. On Thursday, May 3rd, Johnson County Community College was recognized by the Olathe Public School Board, Board of Education, for our partnership with Olathe Public Schools as evidenced by our involvement in their career expo, their 21st Century Academy programs, College Now, our outreach to Hispanic students and youth dealing with economic challenges, the fine art events at DeCarlson Center, and numerous other programs to support students. Specifically recognized were Richard Fort, interim dean, industrial technology; Denise Griffey, program director, early college, community outreach, and STEM; Melissa Jimenez, recruitment coordinator, and also trustee Ingram. If you check out the Olathe Schools website, you'll see a screen, massive screen photo of everyone involved. And I do what I do best, is simply hold the award that was given. And Trustee Cook, I would like to present this to you as a recognition of all the fine work that we do with the Olathe School Board.
Well, thank you, and I'll return it back to the college.
I will store it away properly. And that concludes recognition and awards.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And again, an award isn't usually given to an individual for the individual's work, but for the organization's work. And I want to thank everybody and congratulate everybody for this recognition by the Olathe School District. The open forum is the next item on the agenda. It's scheduled at each regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers must register by completing the registration form prior to the open forum agenda item, giving his or her name, city of residence, the name of group he or she is representing, the topic, and a brief one- or two-sentence summary of the presentation. Each registered speaker is allowed five minutes to speak behind the podium. If there are a significant number of registered speakers, the time will be reduced for each registered speaker. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. Personal insults, profanity, or language that is not appropriate to be aired live on television, and offensive comments based on protected status or class are prohibited. The chair of the board has the authority to keep order and impose reasonable restrictions on any disruptive behavior of those participating in the board meeting. We have a number of registrants tonight. You will each be allocated five minutes. And the first is Dennis Batliner. Please come forward, Dennis. And again, for the record, if you would state your name and address, that'd be good.
Dennis Batliner, 10,000 Perry Drive, Overland Park, Kansas. I first spoke about the track issue back in January, along with some other people, with great hope for a reasonable discussion, but I've gathered that you only view us in a negative fashion and as a problem to be solved. My wife, daughter, and son all graduated from here, and they all went on to earn bachelor's, and our children earned master's degrees due to the excellent start that they had here in their education. As a longtime taxpayer, why would I do anything to negatively affect the college? I wouldn't. You know my son was a track and cross-country athlete and coach here, and is now in Arizona coaching young men and women to be better athletes, better students, and better people. There are hundreds of student athletes who've gotten their start here and have gone on to do fantastic things, like Ashley Reed, who turned her life around here while she was at JCC as a track athlete, and she was named JCCC Athlete of the Year. She went on to Colorado State University and was their first Wilma Rudolph Award winner, which is given to student athletes who have faced immense personal, academic, and/or emotional trials, and rose to achieve academic success while playing in her collegiate athletics. A video of her amazing story, part of which was filmed here on the campus and at Olathe East, is on YouTube. So eliminating the largest athletic programs at JCCC eliminates more than future opportunities. It eliminates positive community marketing. It eliminates 60 students from JCC where enrollment is now down 15.3% since 2011, while the overall Johnson County population is up 8.6%. So our group that's been trying to change your minds has been surprised that every attempt to have an open dialogue with the administration has been stymied. While we offered positive ideas to save the programs, the administration responded with negative rationales that don't make sense. Where are your efforts to think of innovative solutions? We haven't seen any. So why were we stymied? We now know why, and we got emails to talk about it. In an email by Mr. Sobchak to the Board of Trustees on March 14th, some of the things that are in it said, "Consequently, you have been strategically targeted," the board, "and will continue to be targeted as long as they, us, feel there is the opportunity to reverse the decision. This group realized early on that to pursue the administration after we've made a recommendation and decision is fruitless because we will stand firm for what we believe is the right decision. Their only hope, our only hope, is to go after you, the board," according to Mr. Sobchak. "Most importantly, the effect on the administration will be significant. The marginalization that will have occurred with this reversal will be as disincentive for any of us to make any hard decision in the future, realizing that the board can overturn an operational decision once public opposition surfaces." Targeted? Strategically targeted? We're not the military. We're a group of citizens, and we're now concerned about more than just athletics programs at JCCC. This is a public institution run on the rule of law and democratic principles. We are not micromanaging. We're questioning the elimination of highly successful 32-year programs. They're the largest and some of the most diverse athletic programs on campus. "Targeted" is used pejoratively. We are communicating, or trying to, with our elected officials whose job it is to represent us. Let me remind everyone of Kansas Statute 71-2001. It's under the board's photo. Quote, "The Board of Trustees shall have custody of and be responsible for the property of the community college and shall be responsible for the management and control of the college." Sounds pretty clear to me. The board is ultimately in charge of everything, including funding, but we have been told over and over by the administration, there was not enough funding, there was not enough money. Not enough money to fund the track and cross-country programs that cost about $410,000 at the time, and a new outdoor track that'd cost about $1.4 million. Not enough money. Yet recently, the administrative staff has found a way to reallocate an additional $7.3 million, $7.3 million, for the expanded scopes in the Facilities Master's Plan that was discussed at the board workshop on February 14. The total of the project now is up to $110 million. Yet you can't find funding for track and cross-country.
Dennis, your five minutes is near, so if you could wrap it.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Blake Koger.
Blake Koger, 24853 West 148th Court, Olathe, Kansas. I have to first apologize for missing the last board meeting. I didn't double-check the website. I wish I could have been here, but I know I think a lot of us missed it. But maybe we all needed some space. So I'd like to open with another heartfelt story of the program impacting lives and enhancing the community, but that doesn't really seem effective. We've told you many of those, and many have written on those. So I think that those stories, it's clear that you all think that those stories exist at the same rate as all other programs on the campus, so I won't spend time on that. What I will do is give you another observation from our community, a community of literally thousands that you all, and especially the administration, constantly call a few or a couple of people. Clearly, this group is missing the point. You think this passion exists in other programs? Clearly, what other program has had any alumni event on campus with over 500 people join in person? Over 500. We have a full list of names and contact information for each of those individuals. If any of you had bothered to show up, you'd have seen that. I still can't believe it. Not a single one of this college's leadership showed up. 500 proud alums of this school ignored. I mentioned a few board meetings back that I really should come to expect this. It's clear that your preferred course of action is to discredit, to marginalize, and to trivialize our efforts in the voice of this community, and we only have a few of us here today. So I'll take some keys from President Sobchak and his lengthy March email. He mentioned that he came in on a Saturday to respond to what he called, quote, "allegations, accusations, slurs, and inaccuracies levied by the few individuals who are leading this effort, who by the way, many of whom live in other parts of the country," end quote. For one, we literally live here. I live here. I came here because of this program. 500 people at least live here. If he's referring to Bryan and Phoenix, well, he's moving back this summer. But if someone doesn't live here, are they not entitled to their opinions, their voices to be heard as alumni? Also, because we have vastly different viewpoints on this, doesn't mean we're inaccurate. And because we are addressing them directly at you, I guess that feels like allegations and accusations. Finally, I assure you, there were never any slurs. That's absolutely preposterous. He then goes on to say, "After three pages of single-spaced prose with much more to write on, I realize that these comments didn't merit a response nor my time. By responding to their comments, I legitimized them." I guess he wouldn't want to legitimize the few of us. He wouldn't want to legitimize the democratic process. President Sobchak's email further notes the exorbitant cost of the program and building new facilities, et cetera. There's a massive, underutilized base of proud alumni, the thousands I mentioned, but to my point, you haven't considered alternate sources of funding. What if there was a local sponsor, or a group, or a private entity that would have given to the programs? Seems that that would be worth consideration. Maybe you reduce scholarship numbers, you tighten the budget, there are a lot of options, but you chose to simply cut the program, which is baffling. Finally, President Sobchak wrote to you about how the most important effect of listening to us is that the administration would be marginalized. The administration would be marginalized. He said, "Reversal will be a disincentive for any of us to make any hard decision in the future, and it will become even harder for leadership to make difficult, challenging decisions where there's a possibility that those decisions will be overturned." This happens all the time. This happens every day. Some plans or work you do gets reversed. He added that, quote, "Institutionally, all decisions will be subject to, in effect, a public referendum. Such a reversal regarding the track will be a clear signal to the campus community and community at large that a couple people can influence operational decisions and ultimately change the future direction of this college to accommodate their self-interest. It's amazing what a few people can do with a well-strategized social media strategy," end quote. This isn't just a social media strategy, and yeah, I think we're pretty good at this. But self-interest? Are you kidding me? You think I'm standing here today for my self-interest? I'm not. I want others. I want future generations to have the opportunities I had that changed my life, other youth in our community. Self-interest? This is part of democracy and part of being a community college. Sometimes, just sometimes, we need to listen to the community. As he noted in his email, "When you consider this issue, please do not underestimate its significance. The real issue isn't about the track or the track program. The real issue is about the future of JCCC." And he's exactly right. That's why we're here.
Thank you, Blake. Next speaker is Nick Cole.
Nick Cole, 12232 Connell Drive, Overland Park, Kansas. So there are a few things that I'd like to touch on with you guys. Number one is something that Dr. Cook says in his opening statements, in that we're supposed to contact the administrators or the staff in the departments when it concerns a particular issue. And multiple times that we've been up here over the past few months, it's been suggested to reach out to Dr. Sobchak, Mr. Weber, Mr. Gray, a few others, to have a meeting, which I did. I took time out of my day, away from my family, away from my job, to do just that. We had key stakeholders in this community. For example, Coach Van Rose, who has coached 50-plus years in the Shining Mission School District, wanted to allocate some of his time, take time off even, to try to attend that meeting. Multiple other coaches who have been in this community for a long time wanted to do that, but the problem was, it was stated very clearly to me throughout the process of setting that up, that there was no interest on the administration's end on having an open dialogue with us. All that you guys were interested in was telling us things that you've already told us, or things that we found out through core document requests. Why in the world would we waste somebody like Coach Van Rose's time to come up here so you can tell him things that you've already told everybody else? Why would we be interested in that? So the meeting was effectively shut down. So we tried. We tried to meet with you guys. We wanted to have that open dialogue, but there was not interest on your end. So I'm just confused on why the board, who, Dr. Sobchak is your boss technically, would tell us to reach out to you and others in the administration office and try to set that up, but then the administration would say, "We're not interested in hearing from you and your opinions and your ideas and your concerns. We only want to tell you canned statements, and if you aren't okay with that, then we don't want to meet." So you're effectively telling your boss, "I don't care about your recommendation. We don't want to meet with these guys." So that, to me, is a huge issue. If I did that at my work, if my boss said, "Hey, you need to meet with that client," and I tried to limit the terms of that client meeting and then shut it down, I might get fired. So I'm just gonna, I'll leave that one there. Another thing I want to touch on is Dr. Arjo, who spoke recently. We do, after we leave, we tend to watch the rest of the meeting because we do have an interest in it. And he's a member of your own faculty. One of the things that he commented on was our group's utilization of the democratic process, and how impressed he was that we were willing to do that, about something that we're passionate about and that we're concerned about. Clearly, we are trying to communicate with you all and utilize that process. We're not targeting the board. We're not attacking you. We're not trying to slander any of you. We're simply doing what we are supposed to do, appealing to our elected officials. One other thing that I know was touched on was the Maricopa District example, how we've used it to compare programs, women's soccer to women's soccer, track and cross-country to track and cross-country, as an example of how they're doing more, they're very successful with much less resources than what this community college has. Where in that same example, I believe it was Randy Weber used comparing the football programs at four of those member schools being shut down by that district as a reason to essentially discontinue one program at one community college here, which we're trying to use that as an example to show you some positive things that you could be doing with programs, and at the same time, Mr. Weber wants to use that as a way to cut down your own athletic department. To me, that does not make any sense. The last thing that I want to touch on, and I think Mr. Musa's not here, but I think he was the one who, last time we were here, spoke and said that he was a little bit offended, or some of you were offended that we would question the integrity of this decision. My response to that is good. You should be offended. It's not bad to be offended. It's okay. In fact, a lot of times, a lot of positive things, a lot of positive change, comes out of someone's taking offense to something else. It drives them to do something. But your offense should not be directed towards us. We didn't make the decision. We're just here trying to appeal to you to invoke positive change, evoke positive progress for this college, for this community.
Nick, your five minutes is up, so if you could bring closure.
So I'll close it out with this. If you're going to be offended, be offended that the administration did not provide you with the proper budget details for the reason that this program's being cut was due to budgetary concerns. How can you cut a program for budget reasons if you don't know the budget of that program, which Mr. Musa even said, "You guys didn't know the budget of the track and cross-country programs when you agreed that it was okay to cut them, when the reason for cutting them cited was budget." That doesn't make any sense. How can you cut something from a budget if you don't know the budget for that program? So yes, take offense, but don't direct it at us. Direct it at those who should have provided you that information, and directed it internally because that information should have been asked for when it wasn't provided.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That's it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Larry Fotovich.
You know, the comments are fresh when someone brings a laptop up, right? My name is Larry Fotovich. My address is 14222 West 158th Terrace, Olathe, Kansas. First, let me say that I have nothing but glowing reviews of my time here as a student from 1981 to 1983. Honestly, the professors here at that time were better than those at the university where I graduated, but this is the first time I've ever addressed the board, and the fact that I'm here tonight to lodge a complaint in juxtaposition of that praise should concern you. My daughter, sorry. My daughter, who is also here tonight, couldn't comment because she's working as the campus ledger video executive producer and is directing and recording at this meeting tonight, but I'm here to tell you about her experience with a couple of her professors and how the formal complaint system let us down. Instead of an investigation of her allegation of abuse, which is what the ethics point system promises, the Human Resources Department funneled her right back to the chair who was copied on the very email that she cited as abusive. Never mind that the chair already had nearly a month after receiving the email to make things right, but she didn't. But we trusted in the system, and as uncomfortable as she knew it would be, Laura went right back to the person who witnessed the abuse and said nothing. And in that meeting, the chair didn't even have a copy of the three-page email to reference. So what does the email look like? I have it right here. It is three pages of single text, or single-spaced text, and it isn't, as it purports to be, a self-improvement pep talk, but an airing of grievances. Here are some of the professor's words. She said, "It's not about how I feel, but about being honest. You misled me. You were dishonest," and then it goes on from there. Of course, none of that is true, and I think her comments are reckless and defamatory, especially since the email was also copied to another one of Laura's professors. It's also worth noting that in the email, she questions Laura's eligibility for receiving one of the Dunham Music Scholarships awarded to the college's most promising vocal students. That award was made last summer, and Laura met the requirements, but because the professor didn't get another hour of private voice lessons out of the deal, she wouldn't let it go. It's just one of the many perceived slights that most adults would have gotten over with or gotten over by now. But the really shocking part is when Laura brought up the email to the department chair citing her accusations that Laura was dishonest. The chair's response was, "She can do that. It's not a democracy." I know things have changed a lot since I was last in college, but I don't think, in this viral media environment where people in power are held accountable every day for unfairly treating those who view them as mentors, that libel is a good quality to have as an acceptable college policy. So maybe you're thinking, "This is a one-off instance of poor judgment." It is not. Three days earlier, I asked the same question of the Arts and Humanities Dean, and I got a similar response. He said there are academic freedoms that are allowed in the classroom. When I asked whether libel is against the college's policy, he said no. When I framed the question a different way to make sure he understood it, he confirmed again that questioning a student's integrity is allowable in an academic setting. He said it was okay because this isn't an employable situation, and the student isn't financially harmed. I guess my question to the board is what teaching techniques require a professor to falsely call a student dishonest? Everywhere else, that person would be considered a bully. In the jobs each of you have held, or currently hold, outside of your trustee position, would you want to put your name to an email that makes wild accusations against an 18-year-old? I hope the answer is no, because I know the psychological harm that occurs when a student is unfairly treated by two of her professors while those supervising them circle the wagons. Yes, that's right. Another professor in the same department, after class, when everyone else was gone, asked her to come into her office and then proceeded to berate her until she cried. Now, I'm married to a teacher, and the one common gene that good teachers all have is that they are selfless, and the last thing they would ever want to do is get even with a student by making her cry in a closed office am- a student by making her cry in a closed-office ambush where no one else could witness it. But I believe Laura, and the fact that this professor is alluded to in the three-page email, should also make you trust her. As the semester winds down, I would like this community, this college community, to reflect on Laura's future success someday and ask, "Didn't her career start at JCCC?" Not, "What could Laura have become if only she hadn't attended JCCC?" I hope you will look in this matter further. We've taken it as far as we can, and you are our last hope for justice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it. That will be addressed with our staff, and appreciate you taking the time to bring that to our attention. The open forum is closed, and as we normally do, we do not get into dialogue. I will just say regarding the track issue, that I was scheduled to be at that meeting along with trustee Musa. And when I believe the information was shared, we don't want to talk about why the decision was made and what it was based upon. We no longer want to meet with you. I felt badly about that, but that was a decision that evidently the track group did not want to hear all of the decisions that went into that process. I think this board has made a decision in the best interests of the college moving 50 years ahead as to how that whole front door of the college will look, the track, the existing track is a part of that, and we've had to make decisions about how we're going to move ahead for the college. And the budget is one piece of it. The front door was another piece of it. How we review all of our programs is a third piece of it, and I'll leave it at that. Next item on the agenda is the Student Senate Report. Ms. Bukaima, thank you.
Tonight, I would like to talk a little bit about our new executive officers, Clubs and Orgs awards, our renewable energy goals, and the student healthcare portal. You can see the new logo of Student Senate, so we've voted on. This is officially our logo now. Here is our new executive officers team. They will start at the end of this semester. I think it's a great team, and they will achieve great things. Some of you, I guess, met Tiger already, so you know what. Clubs and Orgs award, this is the list of the different categories of the awards and the recipients. We had a great year, and I think there's a lot of events. They were very successful on campus, outside campus too. You can see that there is some names, like veterans' clubs, or some of our student senators have been gaining awards. In one of our awards, that Student Senate Spirit Award, I would like also to thank the foundation because there's some monetary coming with that award. Renewable energy, this is a screenshot of JCCC facilities master plan. 2020 is going to be here soon. In 15%, I think we are a little bit far. This is what we have right now on renewable energy on our campus. It's about 1%. So every year, we pay about $2 million point seven for our electricity bill. And the solar that we have on our rooftops, hospitality, including your building, is the only building who has all the rooftop cover. I believe maybe the upcoming buildings, the new buildings that I'm going to have on campus, hopefully will have the solar on the rooftops. But we are still very far from the 15% of renewable energy. That would be about $4 million to invest. And if we try to reach the 100% by 2050, that's also about $1 million a year. And those are your goals. Student healthcare, this is a screenshot from the Kansas Board of Regents. As you can see, they are all having the United Healthcare Student Resource for their students. And the list, the list that you have in here is only like four-year colleges. The question that I have for the board is why community colleges are excluded from that policy? If you can, at some point. We did all the research from the student side, but we don't have an answer to that. Meanwhile, there is a portal that costs a little bit, costs about $500, and Student Senate will be paying for that. It's basically just a portal that shows the different health insurance policies available for the students on the market, and they will be able to have someone as a customer service that would explain the different policies. It's just $500 for the whole college, and that Student Senate will be paying for that. This is my last student. Yes, sir.
Ms. Bukaima, how does this work if you're a student? I mean, does it cost a student? Does it cost these colleges? Because these are all region schools. There are no community colleges. But how does it work at the region schools?
Basically, you have to be a full-time student, so 12 credits. As you can see up there, there is graduate students, for example, are not eligible. That means it's only available for mostly undergraduates. I believe that if there is a health center or clinic on campus, that makes a difference. And we used to have one on our campus. So that's the only kind of criteria for that policy. So why is it limited? Is it the Kansas Board of Regents limited to only universities and not community colleges? Or is there another criteria that community colleges need to do? We don't know.
I think it's a school-by-school decision when it comes to community colleges. So those local boards would make that call.
All right. I have a question. So when we used to have a health clinic on site, were we part of that Board of Regents buy-in?
No.
No. This is a student, this is a student healthcare program that apparently doesn't cost the schools anything.
No, it does not.
Students have to pay for it themselves to get some kind of healthcare.
It's optional for the student. It's not mandatory. The cost that that policy right now, it's $144 a month, which is one of the most affordable options you can find.
But they have to be a full-time student, 12 hours.
Correct. And optional.
What's the cost of the healthcare clinic on campus when it was here? Do we know? I don't know. That's been quite a few years.
So we used to pay for, the college used to pay for the supplies, and we had a nurse practitioner full-time on campus, and there was a Shawnee Mission Hospital that was paying for that. So we were paying, providing a space and paying for the supplies. That was the cost. I don't have the exact number, but...
We can do some, we can look into that as far as what we did historically.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It has been a great, great opportunity for me coming up here and talking to you, and I'm pretty confident that Tiger will do a great job next semester.
And where are you going next? What's your next step?
I would be probably graduating next year, at the end of fall, maybe spring. I will still be involved on campus, and I don't know where I'm transferring yet.
All right. Well, thank you. You've done a great job.
Thank you.
Dave?
Yes, I did. Could you go back to the slide that had the awards? You're missing an award. This, you should have gotten the Student Senate Report of the Year.
There would be only one candidate for that, I don't think.
Trustee Cross.
Just thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Bukaima, I just wanted to comment on what a good job I think you did this year, particularly with the grace and class that you handled Secretary DeVos that night. I think you did a great job that night representing the college and all of us, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ingram.
And I was just going to say thank you for bringing this up this evening. I know that's been something that we have spoken about very, very briefly, but thank you. It does give us an opportunity to look at what happened in the past and see if that's, you know, something that we can act on. So thank you for bringing that up.
Trustee Lawson.
I'm so proud of you, and I'm so excited that you're moving on, and yet it's, I'm going to miss you on campus as well. And so I've seen, you know, you in the senate meetings, conducting that, and it's very official, and it's helping to build leaders within the college as well, to show them what government is like. And so that is something that just is, I get excited when more people are involved in politics and knowing what's going on. And then these presentations have been just really helpful to know what's going on for the Student Senate and how we can connect. So thank you also so much for the Health Center because that piqued my interest. So congratulations.
Thanks.
I will just echo what has been said, but beyond that, this slide is evidence of the sensitivity, I guess, I sense from you and the leadership for digging into issues above and beyond what one would think is a Student Senate, and also your knowledge and involvement with the sustainability program. I had a chance a week or two ago to try and make a smoothie on the back of a bicycle because you were out on the campus promoting sustainability, and I didn't pedal fast enough, I guess, to get the thickness that I needed to have. But your involvement on issues like sustainability and looking ahead to the future, I sensed your angst when you said 2020 is not far away, and if we're going to meet that goal, we've got a lot of work to do. But thank you for everything you've done. It's really a pleasure. And some of us have had a chance to meet Tiger, and you've trained him well. So thank you very much.
College Lobbyist Report, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I begin my report this evening, I'd like to exercise a point of personal privilege and acknowledge the very kind words of encouragement upon my mother's passing from many around this table and in this room. The flowers from the college and the foundation, the personal visits to the visitation from the administration and to the memorial service, and the cards that I received. I just want to thank you. The legislature adjourned Sine Di on May 4th this year, and the reason I put it in those terms is because normally we would be waiting for about 20 days, and the legislature would come back for sort of a ceremonial closing of the session for each year. The way the adjournment resolution was run this year, there was no 20 days, and the legislature is now done and complete with their business. So should the governor choose to veto any legislation that is still before him, there will be no opportunity for the legislature to attempt to override that veto. The budget passed a day before the legislature adjourned, and so you'll have to excuse the typo that's in the first paragraph where I indicate that the Thursday before they adjourned, on April 30th, that the budget was passed. That was actually May 3rd. And one of the chief things that we were advocating for the entire session was restoration of the cuts that were made in fiscal year 2017. I'm pleased to say that we did have some success in that arena, and while we didn't get back the entire $24 million for the system, it was about $15 million, and that's a 62% restoration of the cuts that were made that will be returned to our budget in this budget For us, the cuts were approximately $800,000, and so that represents roughly $500,000, or maybe a little bit more than that, restoration to our budget. And that's a conversation that we've been having all throughout the session here on campus with the Government Affairs Task Force, is just to stay on top of that and see exactly where that might end up. Those dollars will flow through the board office, like all of the block grant dollars that we receive do. I've attached a budget worksheet to the report, just for your information. I think it's interesting. It shows what the 4% budget cut looks like. It doesn't break it out by individual institution at the community college level. However, it shows what the 4% cut looks like, the requested restoration, the actual restoration, and then the difference of what that looks like. And so it'll be a little bit before we see what check comes in the mail as far as receiving the restored funds. But that is, in fact, good news. A couple of other items that were included in the Budget Conference Committee Report that we also advocated for was the National Guard Tuition Assistance Program. It wasn't fully funded. The difference is several hundred thousand, but we're pleased that that part was also passed in the budget, as well as the governor's budget recommendation, which included full funding for CTE programs, both in fiscal year 2018 and 19. So again, those are good news items that we have not seen in quite a while. Finally, as it relates to the budget, the capers contributions on behalf of the state were also fully funded, and that's something that we've not seen in quite some time, that the payments are being made to the bonding agency in the full amount, both for 2019 and The other interesting thing that we have in this year's budget that we haven't seen in more than a decade is an ending balance. In the current fiscal year, we'll have a $447 million ending balance, and for the next fiscal year, it'll be approximately $375 million. That's great because things like that help boost the credit rating for the state of Kansas. That has, in fact, occurred recently. The credit rating was upgraded, and our only hope would be that the trends continue in this fashion. And it wasn't without challenge. Talking a little bit about K-12, because again, that was the big piece of what was being discussed and what delayed everything else throughout the legislative session. There was $192 million investment made in the next budget cycle for the adequate finance portion of K-12 education. It's a little over $525 million for the five-year period. That has been signed by the governor. It is now before the court. They will take it up later in May for review, and we will have some level of understanding of what the court plans to do, hopefully later this summer. If it is not adequate, or it's not deemed adequate by the court, there will be a necessary calling of a special session of the legislature, and that will have its own set of issues should that happen. So again, stay tuned, and we'll keep you apprised of what's going on with the waiting game. A few other issues of interest that we've been following and that I've been reporting to you on the entire session. Concurrent enrollment, that particular piece ended up as a pilot program for one year in English comprehension, Composition 1, and that program did not make the final cut for what was passed in that particular bill. Another item that we've talked about too, and I think we'll be talking about it in the future, is the dark store theory piece. Again, no legislation was introduced. There continue to be ongoing Board of Tax Appeal cases, as well as I think there will be court cases that follow. We've been put on notice that there could be a need to return some of the dollars depending on the outcomes of some of those Board of Tax Appeals cases. I think there will be appeals even after those occur, but those could go back to 2011. And so again, very important things that we need to be following, even though there's no legislation, it'll still continue to be talked about in the legislative circles. And then finally, on the legislative arena, Campus Carry was at one point an issue that was added as an amendment to one of the concealed carry bills that was out there. It was later stripped out of the bill, and in the end, that bill did not pass either. And so that issue was left open as well. And then finally, just a comment about an event that we held during the legislative break. On April 19th, we had issued an invitation about a month prior to the Johnson County delegation to attend a luncheon, one of our hospitality lunches at the Culinary Academy. And we had about 11 legislators that attended, received great remarks, not only about the meal, but just the fellowship and the conversation that was held. I know that several administrators and a couple of trustees were there, and it provided a great opportunity just to build on those friendships that we have with the delegation. We are going to try and do that again in October, and so we'll see if we can pick up some of the people that maybe weren't able to... weren't able to attend in April. So, Mr. Chairman, I would conclude my remarks there, and answer any questions as I may.
Any questions or comments?
Trustee Ingram.
I have a question. Can you take us back a couple of years ago to when Capers wasn't fully funded, and then they were supposed to begin that repayment with 8% interest? Is that right? Do I remember that correctly?
I think that's the correct amount of interest that the state was charging itself.
Okay. And, help me, bring me up to date on that.
I don't recall specifically what happened when those payments were pushed off. I do know that, at the time, we were still sweeping dollars from KDOT to make a lot of, to cover a lot of areas of state government, but I don't know that I can get very specific going back that far.
Well, that affects a lot of us here, so.
Trustee Cross.
Yes, sir. A couple of questions for Mr. Carter. The Legislature adjourned signee die, because they anticipate Governor Corrigan won't veto anything? Is that correct?
I don't know that I can make that proclamation. I know that there are a number of items before his desk. I'm trying to think if there are any that are significantly controversial, but I don't know that there are. And I suppose he still has line item veto authority on the budget.
My observation, for better or for worse, I mean, he's worked fairly well with them, so it seems that they're somewhat confident that he's not going to veto anything.
I think that's probably a fair assessment. I know that they're hoping that.
One other quick point, if I may, Mr. Chair. It was March of 2014 at Quisenberry's Funeral Home in Tongonoxie, Kansas, that Dr. Sobchak showed up at my grandmother's funeral, and that meant a lot to me, and I'm sorry we couldn't have done more for you, but our sympathies.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dick. Appreciate it. And, any other comments? Thanks. Appreciate it. Committee reports. The first one is the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee did meet on Thursday, May 3rd, in this room. Your minutes reflect the large number of people that were in attendance at that meeting. We did have a chance to meet Chester Moyer and Corey Robinson with Ruben Brown, our auditors, and that external audit is in process, so we had an update on that. We had various reports, again, as they're listed procurement services. It's an area that some of us have really been very appreciative of how the procurement services work here, and again, that involves a lot of people, but how we put out RFPs, how they come in, how we procure products and materials for the college is really in good hands, and the audit process reaffirmed that. We had a little discussion on password control, and what's going on with that in our data security system. We had quarterly projects, updates, as you can see, on facilities rental and hosting audit, cloud operating, cloud computing audit, and business continuity planning, internal audit. Don't ask me any questions about the cloud, because it's way above my head, but I really feel good that we have it in good hands with our staff. We had audit recommendations, follow-up, review of the Ethics Report, online update, and you can see that report quarterly February 1 through April 26. We had 14 reports that were received on the Ethics Report Line, five anonymously. 10 of those have been addressed favorably, and 14 have been reviewed. I guess 14 have been reviewed and appropriately addressed, so we're in good stead there. 2016-17 Benchmarking Report. Ms. Vogler gave a report showing our statistics compared to other benchmarks, and in each of those categories, we are very favorable in how we benchmark. So, I think we can really feel good about all of that data that goes on day in and day out. We had a report on the COPS Watch, and we had an executive briefing. Trustee Ingram, do you have anything to add to that?
What is COPS Watch?
It was a two-hour meeting, and a lot of detail, and I've gone over it rather quickly, but I'm sorry.
I'm not familiar with what COPS Watch is. What is COPS Watch?
Well...
If you see something, say something. It's the mechanism by which we encourage the college community to report issues of concern.
It's an acronym for keeping our people safe, and so the whole theory, if you see, in each of the rooms, you see the candy stripe signs, that's part of our strategy.
Oh, thank you.
It's actually been in place for, what, four, five, six years? Several years. And it's one of those things where I think we're trying to communicate better and more effectively to all students and faculty about, if you see something that's not proper, report it. And that is something we continue to work on, so. Okay. Any questions on the Audit Committee? We meet quarterly. Next one's scheduled for August, I believe. But I don't give that report justice, because of all the committees that we have, that one takes at least an hour and a half to two hours. And even when I'm conducting the meeting, and I like to move things along, but good detail there. Next item is the Collegial Steering, and we did meet, what, this past, I guess it was last week already. And we had one item on the agenda, and we asked each of the representatives to share two or three values that they thought their organization brought to the effectiveness of the college. And so, again, for your review, representatives are from the Faculty Senate, the Faculty Association, Ed Affairs, trustees, and administration. And we asked each of them to list those two or three things. Again, a very good dialogue took place, and I think what came out of it was, each of the organizations took that question rather seriously, and in some cases, we had one- and two-page handouts. I won't go into all of the detail of each of those, but I think in that discussion, and Dr. Arjo may want to respond to this, but he said, in part, "The awareness we have of what the other organizations within the college are doing is helpful to help us understand where we may have differences and where we can work together." So, a lot of it had to do with collaboration and representation, and Trustee Ingram even represented the Board in terms of what the Board brings, and did a really good job about advocacy to the community, advocacy to the staff, to the faculty, but this opportunity, we have to be engaged in the community and understand how the community is thinking within the county, bringing that back to the college. I have high hopes that, as each organization is working on that even in more detail, that we'll continue to have good dialogue. Dr. Sobchak summed it up in terms of the administration saying that "we think we bring a message of advocacy for students." And I believe all the organizations are advocates for students. In many cases, it was implied and understood. In other cases, we just say, hey, that's what we're here for. So, the whole idea was, how can we, with our different silos of operation, work together, share our differences, and share our concerns, and advocate for, whether it's faculty or staff, or students, or each other, to make this college the college that it is and can become. Again, I will defer, Nancy, to fill in the blanks.
I think it was just really helpful. I would add that, just after our HLC visit that we all had gone through, you know, we felt like we could continue to bring that conversation and move it forward. And all the groups expressed at Collegial Steering how important it was to go through that exercise, and I think that was what came back as feedback, how beneficial that was to just sit and pause and think a little bit more about how collegially we all are here for one purpose, and that's our mission. So, that was a great meeting. I've had lots of good feedback.
Thank you. Well, it's easy within our silo, or our organization, with turnover, to not understand what we're about. We have questions here. Trustee Cross, the question on the COPS issue. It's always good to review that. What is that? What are we doing? Why do we do that? So, if we understand it internally, within our little area of domain, then how do we share that with the rest of the campus, with the rest of the college, and get to a better understanding? So, thank you. Human Resources, Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Human Resources Committee met May 7th here in the boardroom. Trustee Lawson and I were present, along with, I think, every member of the Cabinet except Dr. Sobchak. We discussed the Employee Assistance Plan. Procurement Services issued a request for proposal for the college's Employee Assistance Plan and Student Assistant Plan benefits. A brief description of the college, and the requirements were outlined in the request for proposal. Vendors were asked to respond with quotes for the upcoming 2018-19 benefit plan year, and the initial term of the contract will be from June 1, 2018 through May 31st of 2019. The college utilized the consulting services of Holmes Murphy and Associates to assist with the drafting requirements of the RFP, to assist with the evaluation of the submitted proposals. Thirteen firms were invited to respond. The eight firms who responded with the proposal are listed in your Board Packet at Page 1, and the entire report is at Pages 1 through 4. Ultimately, com-sike, the current incumbent was selected. And so, it is the recommendation of the Human Resources Committee that the Board Trustees accept the college administration's recommendation to authorize the President to negotiate a contract subject to review by college council for the provision of the Employee Assistance Plan with the New Directions Behavioral Health for the period of June 1, 2018 through May 31, 2019. The blended monthly subscriber rate for the New Directions Behavioral Health Plan is $13.22 per participant. The proposal includes no increase in the contract for the two additional years, and these rates represent an approximate 13% decrease from the 2017-18 per participant benefit plan year cost, and I so move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Thank you for staff.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, we also had a presentation regarding an overview of salary increases proposed for the fiscal year 2019. The recommendation by the administration and staff includes a 3% salary increase for full-time, part-time, non-bargaining unit employees, a 3% increase in the adjunct faculty salary table. And so, it is the recommendation of the college administration, and I believe now, Human Resources Committee, that the Board of Trustees authorize, effective July 1, 2018, a 3% salary increase for all non-bargaining unit salaried in full-time and part-time hourly employees employed as of June 30, 2018, and a 3% increase in the adjunct faculty salary table, and I would so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have a question. Can you, or could someone remind me where we gathered that? Where did that 3% derive from? Where did that come?
The 3%, after we had the salary study, we talked to, we have two salary consultants that we talked to, and we just basically had a discussion with them on, what do we need to do to be competitive with our rates? And with the salary study, the recommendations and like that, we took 3%.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Becky, we talked about at the committee that generally, it's been my experience at the college, that the staff and administration's pay increases will follow from essentially what the faculty negotiate.
True.
And there was a slight difference, I think, in 2015, was a little bit lower, but then followed the 2.75 that the faculty got thereafter. So, generally, the part-time and full-time employees have followed the faculty rate increases.
Traditionally, they do, and it was in fiscal year 14 that there was a deviation. We had another salary study that we had to make individual adjustments on, and so at that point, about the, I think, 2.75, and the staff got a 2%, and then we made the adjustments, there's a difference there. So, we have had times that we had a deviation from that, typically, they year one another.
Any other discussion? Trustee Lawson.
And we're still negotiating in good faith, so that's where we were discussing in the committee.
Absolutely. No difference, yeah.
Correct.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, there is, on Page 4, a Human Resources Working Agenda there for your review. Should you forgotten what goes on in that committee? But that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Cross. Any questions about the working agenda? Learning Quality, Trustee Lawson.
We did not have any recommendations to move forward. Just kind of to give a recap, Professor Doug Patterson gave a phenomenal vatical presentation on astronomy. At the end, we had some questions about the possibility of having some research equipment quality foundation that they're looking at, because I think that'd be pretty exciting to be able to include elementary school and high school, and some of the other partnerships within the county and the region to actually have published work, and have their name on that stuff. So, that's stuff that they're, you know, looking at down the road, so it was exciting to kind of hear some of those future plans. And then we had a great presentation on pathways with Dr. Weber's team, and just the progress of where we are on that, and continuing to get some updates, and the importance of trying to get students engaged in the process, because a lot of the times, our systems are there, but then about how do we get those students into that system? And typically, a high probability of our students, and I'm familiar, I'm a graduate of a community college, I only went to school to go to school, and then I left. So, how do you capture those students that are moving so quickly, and don't have the time on campus to be a part of some of the clubs, that maybe some of our faculty might be able to capture? So, just being able to engage the faculty and the students, and the wraparound services that we have for them to be successful, and to increase our graduation rates. So, that was a great presentation by your team. Thank you so much, Dr. Weber. And then we also had a great discussion by the Assistant Dean Marge Shelley about the opportunities for seniors. So, I don't know if maybe Trustee Snyder might want to come in and talk a little bit about that, but we're seeing a growth of senior citizens in our county, and so we were just looking at that program that we have for 60-plus, and how we can encourage to fill that.
I think you gave a thorough report.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Management, and you have a few items for our consideration.
I do. I have a rather lengthy report, so please be patient with me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Management Committee met on Wednesday, May 2nd, 2018, at 8:00 a.m. right here in the boardroom. Trustee Snyder, Trustee Musel, and myself, as well as staff, were there, and that information begins on Page 8 and runs through Page 24 of the Board Packet. The Management Committee received several presentations from staff, beginning with John Clayton, Executive Director of Institutional Effectiveness Planning and Research. He presented information on an agreement with the University of Wisconsin-Stout for a joint venture to offer benchmarking services to the four-year sector of higher education. This agreement information can be found on the Consent Agenda on Page 42 of the Board Packet. Rachel Leers, Associate Vice President of Financial Services and Chief Financial Officer, provided a semi-annual update on the college investments in the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool. Mitch Borchers, Associate Vice President, Business Services, provided a sole source report. Rex Hayes, Associate Vice President of Campus Services and Facility Planning, gave a monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, and this report can be found on Pages 14 and 15 of the Packet. He also reviewed a report on the financial status of facilities master plan projects. That report is on Page 16 of the Board Packet. We also received a progress report on the two new buildings, the Career and Tech Ed Building, and the Fine Arts and Design Studios. Tonight, we have 11 recommendations to present to the trustees. Nine of these are for RFPs and existing contracts, and can be either combined into one recommendation, or handled separately, and I'll leave that to the trustees for their preference. But first, our recommendation is related to the fiscal 2018-2019 budget. Here, Rachel Leers reviewed the management budget recommendation. As the Board is aware, we followed the progress of the budget development for months now, and the guidelines used to build the budget were approved by the Board of Trustees on December 14th in 2017. As reported at the April 4th, 2018 Management Meeting, and Board Budget Workshops last month, one adjustment to the guidelines is included within the proposed budget. Based on information now obtained from the county appraiser in March of 2018, Johnson County property values have increased by more than 5%. The projection first used when the budget guidelines were adopted in December. Now that the Johnson County property tax assessments have increased by more than 7% on average, in order for the college to achieve approximately the same amount of property tax revenue, $99.5 million, a .25 mil reduction from... tax revenue, 99.5 million, a .25 mil reduction from 9.5 mils to 9.25 mils is now recommended. The proposed general post-secondary technical education funds budget for the fiscal 2018-2019 is presented on page six in the packet, and therefore it is the recommendation of the College Administration that the Board of Trustees approve the fiscal year 2018-2019 Management Budget, subject to the adjustments as required. When final beginning balances are assessed, valuation amounts have been determined, and I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the report from Mr. Trustee Lindstrom and all the work that the Administration and Board does, but I speak here to speak in objection to the decrease in the mil, and frankly, thanks to our fiscal discipline as we near our 50th anniversary here at the college, I believe that we should reinvest in the additional funds that we do have as a result of this appraisal. I oppose any cut to the mil levy, because we must first and foremost strengthen the college for our next 50 years. We should reinvest in our students, faculty, staff, programs, and infrastructure that our college is known for. Specifically, any extra revenue, say 60%, should be used to lower tuition or strengthen our move to cost-free community college for all. I think a majority of the remaining balance should be used to compensate our faculty and staff as they help directly produce our greatest product, our students. Finally, in a time of medical, physical health, obesity problems, and when communities are in dire need of common experiences, say through sports, we should save, strengthen, and expand our social and physical infrastructure on this campus. As I've said many times, and though I'm personally opposed and working in opposition to this possibility, there remains a strong possibility that we have a new conservative governor next year with conservative gains in the legislature. Frankly, it's a very real possibility that we're going to have to raise the mil in that climate, just as we did in 2013, which was my first vote on this board to raise the mil. So again, I appreciate the Administration's work, I understand that they're making a very reasonable decision, I just respectfully disagree and dissent. I just believe that we should invest in our college, for our students, faculty, and staff, and the infrastructure, so that the next 50 years are frankly as great as past 50 years.
Thank you, Trustee Lawson.
Thank you, Trustee Cross, for saying that, because those are some of the similar concerns that I have. I prepared a little statement just to kind of explain my vote to the public. Throughout this process, I've asked questions as to what would be the best interest of Johnson County Community College, our faculty, and our students. The desire to return to the taxpayers of Johnson County is a strong one, but it is also to be tempered against being physically responsible. I voice concern and ask questions about using triggers, property values, and phase-ins in case our property value do not continue to increase, a hedge against any potential downturns or changes enacted by our state legislature. In the end, after hours of work with our staff and administration, which I am very grateful for and thank you for your time, I am convinced that the reduction in the mil by .25 will serve the community and maintain our college moving forward. As a result, I am voting yes tonight. While I have reservations in that I remain an advocate for responsible budgeting and seek to avoid short-term reductions that may later have to be reversed, I believe this rollback is the best compromise possible, and vote for both our community and to show unity in our Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Any other comments? Trustee Snyder.
I would just say, I think this is, you know, an important position for us to take moving forward, particularly one that, it being that it's a voluntary position for us to take, we're not under the property tax lid, and so I think it's responsible and incumbent upon us when we have the opportunity to, in my view, do the right thing for this citizen, so that at some point in the future, we're not hammed in by certain legislation we wouldn't want. To lead by example.
Thank you. I would just say that we've been the beneficiary of a county that has very strong assessed valuations over the years, and I think every county government, whether it's city or county, have been sensitive to that assessed valuation, and that they shouldn't capture a windfall, if you will, by either retaining the same mil levy or increasing it. I did vote for the increase in the mil levy back in 2013, because at that particular point in time, I thought we needed to have the extra levy and the revenue as it pertained to the conditions of that particular time, and we approved that and voted it on. I think we received a little criticism last year when we didn't roll it back, I think we left it flat. It was down just a little bit, as I recall, when those final adjustments came through, and I believe that as assessed valuation continues to grow in this county and in some parts of the county, assessed valuation was up 25 to 30%, as I recall Paul Wellcome's message, and I don't believe that we can always rely on the taxpayers to say, yes, we'll just raise our levy or keep it where it's at, and so Paul Snyder, I'm with you in terms of being sensitive to that particular need. So I'll be voting in favor of this motion to reduce the levy by .25. Any other questions? Trustee Lindstrom.
I made the motion, so obviously people know how I feel, but I would like to say that I appreciate the dialogue and the different positions of the trustees, and the process that we go through and the support from staff, so please know that I do truly appreciate the dialogue.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Continue, Trustee Lindstrom.
Okay. All right, our next recommendation is to establish a guaranteed maximum price for gym refurbishment related to the facilities master plan. Work has taken place with college stakeholders to develop an architectural and engineering drawings. This work has progressed to a level of confidence at the construction document phase, so that J.E. Dunn Construction is now able to establish a guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, for the gym updates. Prior to offering a recommendation, I would like for Rex Hayes, who is on injured reserve, I understand, to come on up and give us a little update on the project. Rex.
Thank you, Trustee Lindstrom. College stakeholders have been working hard for the last four months to come up with a scope of services for the gym renovation project, and those recommendations are new bleachers, new seating, two new scoreboards, new lighting, and painting of the entire gymnasium. But due to budget and timing constraints, it will not include the gym lobby work, and that's due in part to costs related to removing the ceiling material, along with the original scope of work, which is to add baffles hanging from the ceiling, along with painting and new lighting. So that, the total lobby work, the total amount of the lobby work is $150,000, so that would put us $150,000 over the original $1.3 million budget. So Administration is recommending that we move forward with the gym renovation work and then treat the lobby renovation work as a standalone project, and do that in the future as soon as we can identify funding and hopefully perform that work as soon as the summer of 2019. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Was the lobby in the original plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Lindstrom, proceed.
Rex, thank you. I just would make a comment that this was one of the aspects of the facilities master plan that I advocated, and I was just obviously disappointed that we weren't able to do the whole project, but I have tremendous confidence in staff, and their recommendation is to go forward in this direction, and I believe that's the right way to do it this time. I would encourage us also to make sure that we consider this in future, so that work can be completely done. But thank you, Rex, but with that, I would make the following recommendation. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept recommendation of College Administration to approve the guaranteed maximum price proposal from J.E. Dunn Construction Company for construction manager at risk services for renovations to the gymnasium in an amount of $1,129,356, and I will make that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, you mentioned briefly in your audit report about the process and integrity of that committee, and as I go with the remainder of our recommendations tonight, I think that would be somewhat relevant, because we have nine recommendations from this point forward from the Management Committee. These are all on-call service contract renewals recommendations, and the Management Committee reviewed nine RFPs for on-call services from Mr. Borchers. All of these renewals are for existing contracts. The on-call arrangements provide staff with the opportunity to move forward on smaller facility improvement projects efficiently and effectively. Information on these recommendations can be found on pages eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12 of the board packet, there are a number of those. There you can see that they are for architectural, carpentry, civil engineering, code consulting, electrical repairs, landscape design, mechanical, electrical and plumbing services, structural engineers, and the painting, the painting and wall coverings are covered in those RFPs. The combined total, not to exceed, of these nine recommendations is $1,125,000, and unless there's a preference from any of the trustees to take them separately, staff and I would recommend that we take all nine RFPs as one recommendation.
I assume they were all vetted extensively in committee?
They all were vetted in committee, and this is a, although it's not a regular occurrence, this has happened in the past on the Management Committee.
What's the board's desire? Would take them as a group or do you want to deal with them individually?
So moved.
Group.
Group, okay.
Is there anyone that anybody would like to pull off of that nine for further discussion?
Let's do them all individually.
Okay, proceed with your motion.
All right, well therefore it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of College Administration to approve the renewal of annual contracts for nine on-call professional services and trades, and I will make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. The detail of each of those motions is in your board packet information. The minutes will reflect the details of each of those motions. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, before I conclude my report, I would ask Trustee Snyder if he has anything to offer as relates to the Management Meeting.
I do not, but thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. And I know you have a pressing commitment, so if you have to leave early, you...
Well, I have another report too.
Oh, I guess we better move ahead then. Treasurer's Report, or the President's Recommendations in the Treasurer's Report. Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The board packet contains the Treasurer's Report for the month ended March 31st, 2018. Some items of note include, at page one of the Treasurer's Report is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund summary. March was the ninth month of the college's 2017-18 fiscal year. An ad valorem tax distribution of $3,774,589 was received from the county treasurer on March 19th and was distributed as follows. To the general fund, $3,561,218, $13,511 to the special assessment fund, $199,860 to the capital outlay fund to get us our total. Also during March, the college made payments of 17, made payment 17 of 20 on the semi-annual payments on the Series 2009 Certificates of Participation for OHEC, and payment one of 40 semi-annual payments on the Series 2017 Certificates of Participation, new career and technical education building and fine arts and design studios. And certificates of participation are just bonds, right?
Yes.
We just call them something different now. I just wanted to make sure I was wrong. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of March 31st, 2018, in all funds, was $114.7 million, which is approximately $14.4 million higher than at the same time last year. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits, and therefore, Mr. Chair, it is the recommendation of our College Administration that the Board of Trustees approve this Treasurer's Report for the month ended March 31st, 2018, subject to some audit.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Dr. Sapschek.
Thank you, Trustee Cook. First of all, I hope you had the chance to review the President's Report to the Board. It's about 40 pages this month, a lot of great highlights and accomplishments by faculty and staff throughout the campus, so please take the time to read this, it's excellent. A couple things. First of all, the Higher Learning Commission has come and gone. Special thanks to John and Sherry Barrett for all of your work, but also for across campus. It was a huge initiative. You know, you go to these conferences for the HLC and you hear these horror stories with regards to the committee showing up, and the rooms aren't mixed up, and they don't have food, and all that kind of stuff. Everything here was masterful, and they definitely gave you high praise and your team for making it happen. But most importantly, the college fared well and represented ourselves very well. In their exit interview, they were very impressed with everyone here and the quality of what we do. We look forward to their draft report, which should come in a couple of months, I presume, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Hopefully about 1st of July, somewhere around, sometime in July.
Good, we just wanted to hear your voice one more time, because you've been hearing it at every meeting for the last six months. Thanks, John. A couple announcements. This is a great collaboration, and I just want to share it with the board. The University of Kansas Health System and the University of Kansas Medical Center have partnered with us to put together a program to help individuals better understand how they can improve or maintain a healthy lifestyle through healthy eating habits. There are eight sessions planned, once a month, over the next eight months, and the titles are things like Cooking with Whole Grains, Healthy Eating to Promote Cancer Prevention, Nutrition for Brain Health, and Reducing Risk of Alzheimer's Disease. These are really relevant today in our world. The program is free, it's going to be at the Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy, but space is limited, so please call 913-588-1227 and say, "Cook Right, Eat Right," and they will sign you up, but make sure you call as soon as possible. And hats off to our culinary department for working with KU in this regard. Last week, we were notified that our college was voted number seven on a list of the nation's 25 safest universities and colleges across the United States by an independent study by YourLocalSecurity.com. We looked into this website, and this deal wasn't an appointment that you pay for, so in other words, we didn't pay for it, we didn't have to buy an ad. This was a legitimate survey of universities and colleges across the country with regard to safety. I'll give you a little bit of the criteria, or who they talked to. First of all, the Campus Safety and Security Survey, which is done yearly by the Department of Education, they collect the FBI Uniform Crime Report, campus size, types of campus with regard to four-year, two-year, private, and so on, campus location, and data availability, and I'll give you the rankings. Number one was Oregon State University, number two was University of Phoenix in Tempe, Arizona, which is an online deal, but apparently they have an actual physical campus as well. Rutgers University, University of Virginia, number five is the University of Oklahoma, number six is the University of South Carolina, and number seven was Johnson County Community College. This is an outstanding testament to the work that not just our police department, who do an excellent job, but all of us do on a daily basis, such as our cops team, our behavioral intervention team, the way we implemented and handled concealed carry on campus. If you remember, our website and videos were used as examples by other institutions and by numerous local and national media outlets as an exemplary way to communicate on this controversial topic. So hats off to everyone here, that's a big deal and something that we can be really proud of. And also, thanks to the trustees too, who have approved the safety recommendations that we make consistently. The last thing I just want to say is, in closing, you know, May is always a great time of the year. We talked earlier about the poster sessions and the collab, some of you may have seen those. Deborah Edmonds and Lori Slaven were up there today talking about what they do. I got to say that it's so incredible to go and talk to the students and see and experience firsthand their pride and their excitement, but also their knowledge and the substance of what they're talking about. And that's a real tribute to the faculty, many are here now who oversee those students and those poster sessions. So I hope next year, if you have a chance, make sure you drop by, they're really outstanding. We have a lot of... We have a lot of honors that are given to students and faculty and staff. For those of you who are able to attend our Outstanding Student Awards, those were, talk about inspirational. And that's something that happens every year. It's, again, a real tribute to the faculty and also to the staff that really support these students and empower them to do what they need to do to be successful. Graduations will be going now, seems like every night. I know tomorrow night will be the honors graduation ceremony, the honors program. I know we have outstanding participation by trustees at every ceremony, which is wonderful and very much appreciated. I have to say that each one of these is a celebration of student success, their accomplishments in the classroom, in extracurricular activities, and in their lives. And when the faculty and staff are honored, it represents outstanding work above and beyond the expectations with a commitment to the very student success that we talk about tonight. So I'd like to thank everyone on campus for a terrific academic year, and that includes our trustees for making all these celebrations of student success possible. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sobchak. Any comments or questions? I don't believe we have any old business. We have no new business tonight. And reports from board liaisons, faculty association, Dr. Arja.
Well, thank you. As you know, this will be my last chance to address you in this capacity. And as I said last time, tradition holds that my job tonight will be largely to just introduce, well, not just, but to introduce the new FA president. Before I do that, I want to take a moment to thank the people who served with me for the last two years, my officers. So that would be Dr. James Leicher, who was our UNISERV rep. Rhonda Barlow was our secretary. Brett Cooper was the treasurer. Ron Paulsek, past president. And of course, Melanie Harvey was the vice president. And Melanie is going to be, as you know, the new FA president. So I'm going to have her come up and say some things about herself and introduce herself to you. But first, I'm going to do the academic thing and give her kind of a formal introduction as we do in the academic world. So Dr. Harvey received her bachelor's degree in chemistry from Anderson University in 1996, and from there she moved on to Vanderbilt University, getting first masters of science and then a PhD in organic chemistry. She came to JCCC after a stint at St. Mary's University, University of St. Mary, and she came to the college in 2008. So she is finishing up her 10th year. Most of you know Melanie quite well, and if you've done anything with her, she's been involved in many, many things. You know her energy, her commitment, her excitement, her dedication to her students, to teaching, to academics, to the college. So I am very confident that the FA is in very good hands, and I know you will enjoy working with her. And so with that, I will turn it over to our new FA president.
Well, I want to thank Dennis for serving in this role for the past two years. He has worked harder than most people realize, and he's done this job with a lot of wisdom and patience, and I've really enjoyed working with him as vice president. I know he's a very eloquent speaker, so I'm sorry. But he is also, just working with Dennis, he's become one of my favorite people here at the college, and I'm going to miss him being in this role. I was really enjoying being the vice president, but I think I'm up for the challenge. So that being said, I'd like to tell you a little bit about my new officer team. I have a very talented team of individuals. I think that they're going to work really well together to bring a lot of different opinions and ideas for the faculty. Jim Leicher is our new vice president, and he has held this position before. He's currently on our negotiations team. He's had numerous leadership roles at this college and outside the college, including serving as chair of ed affairs in the past. He's the current chair of history and political science. He's a dedicated scholar of Kansas history, and he's widely published. He's also the person who started our college scholars program and the Kansas Studies Institute here at JCCC. I think Jim's going to make a great future president later, so I'm really excited to have him on our team. Teri Easely-Geraldo is our secretary, and she is an expert in communications. She's a professor of speech and debate here at the college. She's won numerous awards, including most recently, she was one of the distinguished service award winners. And she's also on our negotiations team, and she's been amazing to work with. Eve Blobom's our new treasurer. She's a professor of sociology, and she currently serves as a co-chair of the sociology department. She was awarded the Outcomes Assessment Award this semester, for this year. Brian Wright is our new UNISERV representative. He's served as the vice president in the past. He's a professor of political science, and he runs our award-winning and just won the, I saw the Outstanding Student Organization Award earlier tonight as they were sharing student organization awards. But he runs the JCCC Model UN program. Okay, so that's our group, and this is the end of the year, as Joe was just talking about. We celebrate a lot of student accomplishments at this time. It's a season for poster sessions and concerts and presentations and awards and all sorts of performances and programs. And of course, graduation, which is super fun. All these events remind us just how special this place is, how amazing our faculty are at providing opportunities for our students to shine and really show what they can accomplish. So we love to celebrate our students, and that's the reason that we're all here, right? So I do have a couple items I want to talk about. I thought I'd try to be somewhat brief. We're still in contract negotiations, of course. We've not yet reached an agreement, but we're hopeful that as we resume negotiations next week, that we'll move closer to a place that balances the needs of everyone that are impacted by our negotiations. We've talked a little bit about the Mill Levy tonight. Of course, property values going up. And I just wanted to note that the change in property values, it does impact the cost of living for all the residents in Johnson County, including our students and our employees. But I do appreciate the difficulties of you guys, your decision with the Mill Levy and the budget. So finally, I want to talk about, this week I was reminded that one of our core values at Johnson County Community College is collaboration. We did a lot of reflecting on our shared governance over the past few weeks, especially between collegial steering, which we did bring a handout. That was us. It was only one page, not two pages. But we did have a chance to reflect on our role on campus and on shared governance at this institution, especially when we met with the HLC group. So when you're meeting with a group and you're talking about a topic, you have to sit and think about, well, what is it like here, and do some self-evaluation. So our faculty leaders met with the HLC representatives, and we did discuss the topic of shared governance. And I should say, in the 10 years that I've been here, I've been here exactly 10 years. This is my, I'm just finishing. I've seen us come a long way with shared governance, in the sense that when I first came, we have all these things that we didn't have then. We didn't have faculty chairs before, and those were sort of one of the hallmarks of having a shared governance type system. We participate now in equip projects, strategic planning, and the program review. I found myself kind of liking the program review, and I talked, I'm like, okay, well, it's effective in a lot of ways, even though it's really a lot of work. And so I couldn't believe I was praising the program review process, but sure enough, it is one of those things that contributes to our shared governance here. That being said, many faculty voiced dissatisfaction in the degree of collaboration involved in decision-making. So I think that where faculty are right now is that while we have experienced a sharing of much of the work done at the college, and I think a lot of this work does inform decision-making often, there's still significant room for improvement, I think, in the way that faculty are included in decision-making. So I think there's room for improvement there. And we also, when we met with them, they did express some concern about the roles and relationships of our faculty association and our faculty senate. And they were very, they were very direct with us about that, the relationship between these groups. And it wasn't something that we're not aware of. We're completely aware of this. We're at a moment right now where our faculty are very united around negotiations. But we're also at a bit of a crossroads in how to manage our voices when we talk about shared governance. The faculty association was chartered in 1979, and for the past 39 years, the FA has worked not only on collective bargaining and negotiated issues that are in our contract, but also the ones that could potentially be in our contract. We've handled professional unemployment issues such as advocacy, professional development mediation. We've managed faculty representation on college-wide committees. We've worked on relationship building. We are involved in political action locally and as part of KNEA and NEA at the state and national levels. And while ed affairs skillfully handles the curriculum items for our campus, the role of the FA has grown over these many years to include almost every other imaginable item that warrants collective faculty involvement. So the problem is that much of the identity crisis that seems to be ongoing for the faculty senate stems from the fact that the FA has not been willing to relinquish items that have historically and experientially belonged to our union. So we haven't been able to, willing to sort of give away areas of influence to another group that doesn't have the same legal relationship and standing. So this has been sort of our internal conflict between the faculty. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of historical context for that, because this is something that we're going to have to address as a faculty. We're going to have to work together and figure that out. So I would say that maybe is our homework, that we have to have a clear, united voice for the faculty if we're going to approve shared governance. And so that is, that is our part of that. So that's all.
Couple of things.
Yes.
First of all, congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
Secondly, your page was single-spaced, six font. It was, it was well done. Appreciate that. Secondly, Dr. Arjo...
It was tiny, but not six font.
Dr. Arjo, congratulations on your tenure. I believe being the head of a faculty association, although not as difficult as being the principal of a high school these days, but it's sometimes very similar in that everybody has an opinion or an idea that's in their best interest, that they want you to support and defend and take to the pinnacle. And I love the discussion on shared governance. I love the discussion on academic freedom. They're very similar, and sometimes we think it's okay when we get our point across and everybody accepts our viewpoint. But I really enjoyed collegial steering on the third and the discussion about what it is we think we do in our, in our organizations and how we can work together. And I appreciate your comment about the work that the faculty has to come to grips as to what is their role with each other in supporting and helping individual faculty as well as departments. I think all of us understand that, and we just have to work together to get there. Any questions or comments of the new president?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And don't worry about this philosopher. His eloquent speech just appears to be eloquent speech because a philosopher will say that's not really reality anyway, so don't worry about it. Okay? Thanks. Thanks, Melanie. Trustee Lindstrom, Research Triangle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I need, at the conclusion of my report, if I can, thank you. The Johnson County Education Research Triangle, or JSERT, is a unique partnership among the Johnson County taxpayers, the University of Kansas, and Kansas State University. The partnership was created in 2008 when county voters supported a 1/8 sales tax to create economic stimulus and advance academic research and business endeavors at Kansas State Oletha Campus, KU Edwards Campus, and the campus, I'm sorry, and KU Clinical Research Center. While KBOR maintains constitutional authority over the universities, a seven-member board composed of elected officials from Johnson County has been appointed to ensure that the use of public funds complies with state and local law. The board oversees funding, conducts annual independent audits, and produces year-end reports. Members appointed to, members are appointed to four-year terms and may serve two terms. The Johnson County Education Research Triangle Authority is comprised of the following representatives. From Kansas State, appointment is Overland Park Mayor Carl Gerlach. The Johnson County Commission appointment is Commissioner Jason Osterhaus. The KBOR appointment is Mike Copeland, mayor of Oletha. The University of Kansas has two representatives. First is Leewood Mayor Peggy Dunn and Kansas Representative Melissa Rooker. The governor has one appointment, and that is Senator Julia Lynn. And the Board of Trustees has one appointment as well, and I serve in that position at this time. The authority met on Monday, May 7, this past week, at 7:30 a.m. at the KU Edwards Campus on Quavera Road in Overland Park. They were, there we received an update from Sue Parker from Parker Communications Group. She explained the recent efforts to better inform the public about the work being done, including website additions and activities, social media activities, and a strategy to have JSERT members present programs at community clubs and service organizations. 2019 will be the 10th anniversary of JSERT, and the authority is now discussing ways to celebrate the accomplishments and many benefits afforded to our community and our residents. We also received and reviewed and approved the minutes from our last meeting, accountant and audit reports, as well as payment of invoices for our accountant and attorney. University reports were given by Dr. Ralph Richardson from Kansas State Oletha, Dr. David Cook from KU Edwards Center, and Dr. Roy Jensen from KU Cancer Center. Finally, we were honored with the attendance of three additional and illustrious guests at our last meeting. The Kansas State University President, retired chairman of the Joint Chiefs Staff, General Richard Myers, was at our last meeting. The KU chancellor, Douglas, Dr. Doug Gerard, was at our meeting. And as I mentioned earlier, KU Cancer Center Director, Dr. Roy Jensen. All three gentlemen expressed their sincere appreciation of the gift that is JSERT, and just as importantly, bringing Tibet, the opportunity of bringing together people and organizations to achieve remarkable results, such as the statistic, and this is a remarkable statistic, that if you live in this area and you're under the auspices of KU Cancer Center, your chances are 25% better of survival and cure because of JSERT and the KU Cancer Research Center. And that's a remarkable statistic. Sales tax revenues for the month of March were $1,441,156.44, or 8.7% over last year's same period in 2017. The next meeting of the Johnson County Research Triangle will be on November 7, Monday, at 7:30 at the K-State Oletha Campus, which is out on Innovation Drive in Oletha, Kansas. For more information, I would recommend people go to www.jocotriangle.com and follow us on Facebook and Twitter. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Lindstrom. I appreciate the comment about the chants in Johnson County regarding cancer. Dr. Jensen is a remarkable individual, and hearing him some time ago, I was also impressed with the network they have with hospitals in the state of Kansas. And I think all the hospitals in Kansas benefit with the cancer research and assistance they can get from the KU Med Center in that regard. So thank you very much for that. Any questions of trustee Lindstrom? Thank you, and you should leave for your other engagement.
Thank you.
Next item is the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. Our next meeting is June 1 and 2 in Kansas City, Kansas. It's a time when we'll celebrate graduates of the Kansas Leadership, I guess, Institute through KACCt, and we have people participating in that. Dr. Noah Brown of ACCt will be here as guest speaker on Friday and Saturday. And trustee Ingram and I will be attending that meeting. If any of you desire to go, let Teri Schliech know, and we'll make that arrangement. But that's up at Kansas City, Kansas.
Will we get hotel accommodations?
I'm sorry?
Will we get hotel accommodations?
Well, I guess you can have them if you need them, but...
No, I'm kidding.
I'll drive you home.
Foundation, trustee Ingram.
Yes. On April 12, the foundations supported our international students with a luncheon...
On April 12th, the Foundation's supported our international students with a luncheon in the Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Center. The college boasts rich diversity and a strong global perspective, thanks to our more than 1,300 international students. There is still time to support our international students through a crowdfunding campaign that is set up through the Foundation's website. The Foundation Directors met on Wednesday, April 25th. The highlight of that meeting was the introduction of Chris Gray and Dr. Randy Weber to the Board. Each gave a PowerPoint presentation of the work of their respective departments, and it was very well received, so thank you to both of you for doing that. A very successful Coon Community Series was held this past Saturday, May the 5th, starring Phil Vassar, and we look forward to hearing the final amount that was raised for scholarships. And for those of you who were there, it was a great concert, he was awesome. On Tuesday, May 22nd, the Foundation's Annual Luncheon will be held in the collab at noon. This has been previously announced to the Board of Trustees. We hope you will attend. We will celebrate the year's accomplishments and look forward to everyone joining us. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Ingram. Questions? Next item is the Consent Agenda. It's an item where we deal with a number of routine items. Is there anybody that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Any item to be removed? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Like last month, I'd like to have an opportunity for trustee comments. We do have an executive session, but before we move into executive session, trustee Snyder, any closing comments?
Just thank you. I had inquired, I had a few budget questions after the last meeting leading up to this, and they were answered very thoroughly, and I appreciate the work on that.
Good, thank you. Trustee Lawson.
I received this photograph signed by U.S. Senator Pat Roberts from our D.C. trip, so that was a nice surprise. So thank you to him and his office for that. That was a lot of work that we did up in D.C., and thank you so much for everything that you did in helping to get students there and get the agenda focused on what we need to be talking about, so thank you.
Trustee Cross.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Ingram.
Oh my goodness, where do we start? I'm just going to say that trustee Lawson and I had the opportunity to kick off the graduation season last Friday night at the Police Academy, and it was wonderful. It was her first graduation, very exciting, and I'm waiting for the next leadership class next month, so.
As am I. Good. I would just like to echo trustee Lindstrom's remarks. I appreciate the professionalism when we share a viewing, a differing point of view as trustees, and I value that and respect it, and it's important to have that kind of dialogue, and I appreciate that very much. The other comment I want to make is that I feel badly for the public that doesn't get to experience what we experience when we're involved with programs. So at the honor student luncheon last week, I was privileged to sit at a table where one of the faculty members, in fact, one of the recipients had received her GED here and now was getting recognized and going to, going to go to a four-year school to get her degree in history. And I was told by the faculty member of another student who got their GED here, I got a four-year degree and I think was getting a master's degree from KU in history. And so the example after example of success stories of students who, for whatever reason, maybe had difficulty in high school and at some point in time say, "I need to come back and get my GED program." And then that launches them into a whole new, a whole new set of opportunities. So I feel badly public that you don't have a chance to hear those and see those, but be assured that we have story after story after story by students who have been touched in a very positive way by faculty and staff and other support people on this campus that gives them an opportunity to become something they are yet to become. And so, thanks to everybody for that, and I appreciate the opportunity to hear those stories. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters exempt from the Kansas Open Meetings Act relating to privileged conversations with legal counsel in the attorney-client relationship and consultation with the Board's bargaining representation in employer-employee negotiations. This session will last 20 minutes. We will resume the open meeting in this same location. No action will be taken during this session. We would like to invite Joe Sobchak, Barbara Larson, Becky Semelveer, Jim Lane, Gurb Singh, Mickey McLeod, Randy Weber, Rachel Learz, and Tanya Wilson to join in this executive session. I would entertain a motion as such.
So moved.
Second.
We'll move by Ingram, seconded by Cross. It's 5 till, we'll start this session at 7 o'clock, and we'll go for 20 minutes. We are back from the executive session. No action was taken. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The May meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. God, it's such a glorious.